Just a little after 5:00 PM on May 28th, our board meeting for the month of May. And so I'm going to call us to order and let's have a roll call vote.
San Diego representative?
Here.
La Mesa representative?
Can you hear me? It was a hard time unmuting.
Yep, we can hear you. Imperial Beach representative?
There.
And Sanitas representative?
Present.
Tula Vista representative?
Here.
All right. Thank you. So we're going to continue with our virtual meetings. I do want to welcome back our vice chair, Steve Padilla. Thank you for being with us. And we're so happy to see you recovered. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Great to be with all of you and to see your faces and hear your voices. A lucky man.
So just kind of the same housekeeping items that we had last time with these virtual meetings. If you're not speaking, please just mute your side, just so that we don't have feedback. Also, if you want to speak or make a motion, there's a little button at the bottom where it says raise hand. If you raise your hand, it's a way for me to know that you're looking to speak or to make a motion. If I'm not, for whatever reason, I don't see it, you're welcome to scream out, say, hey, Joe, you know, but it's easier just to kind of raise your hand at the bottom there. So let's go to the agenda and we have Pledge of Allegiance. I'm always confused now how we do this, but in some meetings, we don't actually do it. But let's do a pledge of allegiance. I'm going to stand and I invite you guys to join me in a pledge of allegiance. So ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Ands.
One nation, under God, indivisible.
Asable.
Liberty.
Liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do we have any items to be? Do we have any items to be added, withdrawn, or reordered on the agenda? All right. So we're going to move to presentations. We have one presentation tonight, and that's from Warren Ruiz, who is a director with San Diego Gas and Electric. So I'll turn over him to make a presentation to us.
Wonderful. Well, thanks Chair Mosca and Cody for inviting us to speak. I really, I know how much is on your plate. We've been working with all of your agencies. So the fact that you gave us a few minutes is a gift. So thank you. I hopefully we can do this on a periodic basis, maybe annually at least, to come and brief you with what's happening at the company. I think obviously in the short run, we're going to have a lot of integration, collaboration opportunities. So happy to come speak whenever is appropriate. First slide.
Just want to double check. Can you see the slide?
I can.
I can see it. Okay.
And can we move to the next one? Perfect.
Yeah.
We thought it'd be a little tone deaf to not come and talk about what's happening with COVID. So the utility obviously continues to operate. We get a lot of questions from customers, things on social media about, you know, why do we see crews out there? You all know better than anybody. I don't have to tell you, we're an essential service. So our crews are still working 24/7 throughout our 27 cities and two counties that we serve. We're doing a lot with small business, medium business, trying to let them know about the payment assistant programs we have. Obviously, many of you know about CARE and FARA and Medical Baseline, the assistance programs we have. Unfortunately, there are a lot of customers who are now available for those programs when they didn't used to be. So you may have seen our TV commercials, which are coming on, you know, every two minutes like an egg timer. We are constantly putting things in market to make sure that folks know about those programs and that maybe if they weren't available or applicable to their family situation in the past, maybe they are now. So encouraging folks to apply. I would just ask that any of your agencies, you know, if you can retweet us, re-Facebook us, these are programs that we all pay into and including CCA customers. And it's really important that we get the word out about those programs being available. The other thing that we ask our regulators to allow is for us to reduce the high usage charge. So along with council member Baber and some others, some of us live in East County and where it gets hot. And so the HUC charge was reduced by 30% this summer. This was a state mandated statewide charge that quite frankly, we didn't ask for, we don't love. And the fact that we got some relief for that for customers, who are especially those who are working from home, I think is really helpful and important. So lots happening in COVID land. If you think of any way that your utility can help your agency, you as a customer, your small business, please let us know. Next slide. So other, and Sean knows this and others on the phone know this, but other, you know, utilities IOUs PG&E and Edison have seen maybe a more gradual uptick in CCAs throughout their service territory. We have a little bit more of a hockey stick. So as you know, today, we're currently serving Solana Energy Alliance, about 8,000 customers. We'll have the kind of Northern County Clean Energy Alliance, about 65,000 customers. And then you all at 775,000 customers coming on in 2021 and 2022. So a big spike for us. Layered on top is a new customer information system, which I'll talk about on the next slide. So SDG&E had one of the oldest customer information systems in the state from the other IOU. So it was really important for us to look at modernizing that system. And this slide, by the way, I did not create for this presentation. We've used this for years. Number three is the most important for you. It was really important for us to build a CIS system that was able to facilitate and integrate and allow for CCA programs to be successful from an information standpoint. So I have a note here I took. So we filed the application in 2017. It was worked on the year before. So it's been several years. Our regulators allowed us to build this system in 2018. And so this system, and I'll maybe bounce to the next slide first before I go into more detail, but really allow us to modernize our operations from an information standpoint. Next slide, Sebastian. So future capabilities, you know, consolidated 360-degree view of the customer. I think once this system is up and running, I would ask for a little bit of time to come back and brief the JPA board on it. I think we're going to have much more real-time, robust data, where customers can compare rates more real-time. It's much more accurate, more efficient. Data-driven analytics, more smartphone capabilities, obviously omni-channel. So we still have our traditional call center and online My Account, the apps. But all of those things are put on steroids, which really will help the CCA and the CCA's customer, our shared customers, to access more information about their account in real-time. Next slide. So I thought what we would do is just go through the roadmap and we've briefed all of your agencies long before you all decided to do a JPA. So no surprise, but just a reminder, our system testing is happening actually now, the first half of 2021. We've had several hundred employees involved in the system. We're doing a readiness launch the last half of the year. And then we have what's called a storming or stabilization period in the first half of 2021. And it's really important that we make sure that this system works. As you all know, we're collecting dollars on your behalf. And so the potential for that to not work perfectly is not an option. This stuff has to be perfect. You all have bills to pay and we need to collect that so you can pay those bills. So if you look at the gray chevrons there, March 2021, we understand municipal accounts are the first goal, moving all the way through residential and small commercial in January 2022, and halfway through there, June 2021 for medium, large, commercial, ag, lighting. Obviously, system testing will inform exactly when we can roll those customer classes on. But this is the estimate we've heard from you all in terms of your goals. And I would just say, and some of you are involved in these, you know, there are weekly team meetings going on with your vendors and our IT folks to make sure that this is optimally integrated. Next slide. That's a picture of our team. You all know who you work with from a regular government affairs operational standpoint. Joe Britton and La Mesa, Katie and Sanitas, Dinah and Imperial Beach, Tula Vista. And then Wes is filling in for Vanessa while she's out in the city of San Diego. I have some appendix slides and the only one that I do want to cover, Sebastian, if you don't mind, is the electric vehicle slide. I think it's slide 10. I've been, I don't know how many of you have followed it, but I've been really impressed with what Marin has done from an EV standpoint. You all know that the majority of your emissions come from transportation. So working on energy procurement is super important. I also think just as important is transportation. And so they've partnered with a number of different entities and they've got quite an alliance going to keep EVs moving throughout the region and to make sure that we're electrifying transportation wherever we can. I know we have several of our board members who are EV drivers, including myself as one of your JPA customers. So an exciting time in clean transportation and certainly an opportunity for both of our organizations to work together. So with that, Chair Moscow, with your permission, I'll take any questions.
All right. Well, thank you, Warren, for your presentation of, on top of, you know, on our minds are definitely the billing system and making sure that we're able to all meet our goals and milestones. And it sounds like you're aware of what our milestones are. And it sounds like that we're all kind of working together to make sure that those are met in the future. And you know when we're going to be launching. So are there any things that you would point out that are challenges that at this point you're working with? Calpine, they'll be testing the system and working with you guys. Are there things that you would say that are of concern or were kind of, where you guys are rolling this out and it looks very positive?
Yeah, great question. You know, Edison went ahead of us. I think it's public. They've had some delays, some speed bumps. I would say that, and Joe, you know, you used to work for SDG&E, a customer information system for a utility, and many of you run water agencies, so you know this, is the most important thing a utility can have, right? It has to work. It has to be perfect. And so we have, like I said, hundreds of employees who are staffed on this project. We have talent from quite frankly, around the world to make sure this thing is successful and it works for customers and works for your CCA. So I would say that as speed bumps have arisen throughout the project, and they have with any big project, it's got the highest levels of visibility throughout the organization. Our Vice President of Customer Service joined the Public Affairs Team on a roadshow to brief all of your cities over the last year about the project. So it's got focus, it's got visibility within the organization. And if we run into more speed bumps or any speed bumps that would impact the CCA schedule, you've got my word that y'all will be the first to know.
So as we roll it out, as you guys roll this out, if there are unforeseen circumstances where there are things that are, that it's not working out as you thought it would be, are there alternatives? What would happen? You would just go back to the old system? Or what are the alternatives? What are the plan B to make?
Yeah. If we've got 10 seconds, Sebastian, do you mind going back to that schedule slide? Because I probably should have focused on this. I think it's slide six. So I think Chair Moscow, I think we will probably know within the last half of this year, I'm guessing 90% of those glitches. The stabilization period, kind of that storming phase in the beginning of 2021 is critical to get that last 10%. And so ideally, most of those glitches and issues will be resolved. And quite frankly, most of them will not be visible to anybody on this call. And I think it's an IT-driven project and some of those things can be fixed. But like I said, if there are things that would impact you or your launch, we will absolutely let you know.
All right. Any questions for Warren? I don't see any hands raising. Feel free to.
Wait, I have a few.
Mark?
Yeah. Warren, it's always a pleasure to see you, my friend. I think.
Likewise.
Yeah, it's always good. Um, I want to, first of all, I want to sing some praises of Dinah Willner, who is our representative. I have been appointed to the Imperial Beach COVID Task Force for Businesses. And Dinah has been nothing short of miraculous to get information to us and to help some of my businesses who are struggling so much during this time. And I really appreciate SDG&E and all their work that they've done. And last but not least, I have two more things. One, AB 1083, I know we are one of the areas that are, we're hoping to get one of our, some charging ports down at our beach community. And I know we're on the list. I know that there's some process that they're still working through. Can you tell me where that's, what is the latest for AB 1083?
Yeah, let me first say that I agree with Dinah. She's a star. She may even be listening in. So if you are, hi Dinah, thank you for your work with IB. As it relates to 1083, we have a briefing meeting with the Clean Transportation Team internally in a couple of weeks. I think the last time we met with them, they're building out the structure and the qualifications, of course, consistent with our regulatory guidance. We have expressed your interest on your behalf. And anybody else who's interested in getting EV chargers at state parks and beaches or schools, which is what 1083 and 1082 respectively provide for, please reach out to your public affairs manager or myself. That's a really, really important project and I think important for our crews who are going to maintain that infrastructure. So let me see exactly where that's at, council member, and we'll get back to you.
Great. And then I'm going to go to a little bit more questions. And I'm going to talk a little bit that something kind of that I think needs to be brought up here. So I'm referring to a Voice of San Diego article that was written just recently. And your communications manager, Helen and Joe, told the Voice that in an email that she doesn't point, that the utility doesn't plan on participating with San Diego Community Power and the sale of natural gas. And I was, when I read that, I was very, one, I was kind of caught off guard, to tell you the truth, because I know that when we rolled it out and IB, you and your, and Dinah came down and spoke to us and we're in full support. And I want to make sure that SDG&E is moving forward along with us. And it sounds like from your perspective, we are, but the article seemed to state something different. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Absolutely. We've, I think we've had a number of issues with, I see a number of issues in that article. I don't think it's entirely accurate. It does not portray us as a ready, willing, and able partner. And I, you've got my commitment that we are. The one thing that I think is important to remember that's different for your agency than our organization is we also have to worry about and be concerned with the other bundled customers we still have outside of your five cities. So it is our regulatory obligation, we actually don't have a choice in this, to make sure that the resources they've procured, they have all paid into, that we get the highest and best value for those resources. And the best way to do that is a competitive process. I think, you know, we have had a number of meetings with Cody and her team to talk through that. We've had some speed bumps in terms of, you know, things maybe that we could or should be doing. But I think that is the best opportunity to get the value for those resources that they've paid into.
Okay, great. Thank you, Warren. Yeah, definitely. No, 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 no. It's exactly what I wanted to hear. I just wanted to make sure that, I wanted to put that on the record too. Because I feel very strongly that we are going to be moving on this path together in that article just kind of. And I know, Lord knows, we've all been interviewed by the Voice and sometimes it always come across in the best way. But so thank you very much for clarifying that.
Sure.
Thank you, Board Member West. I think that Board Member Baber had his hand up before. I'm trying to see if he's on the list. Bill, are you still with us? And did you have a question for Warren? Did we lose Bill? Oh, here he is.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yeah, I raised my virtual hand and you didn't see me. And then I tried to fix it and I fell into the abyss, but it's okay. Joe, when you say raise your hand, do you mean virtual hand or do you literally want me to do this?
No, no, no. There's, I didn't see you. You fell into the abyss, but you're out of the abyss now. You look like a sports announcer there, but the floor is closed. Board Member Baber, I've recognized you.
Oh, well, I wanted to say hi to Warren. Thank you. Is he still there?
Hi, Mr. Baber. How are you?
How are you? Who's Mr. Baber?
Well, I would say my council member, but you reminded me I'm in an incorporated La Mesa, so I'm just outside of the city.
Well, I'm sorry. My cops will still come and arrest you over there, though.
We appreciate that.
Hey, yeah, I think you answered my question. I was worried about the timing and how you were going to roll it out. And I think Joe handled it. So thank you.
Excellent.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Warren? Not seeing any other hat trays. We will move on.
I'm sorry. It's Monica. I just also wanted to say hello to Warren. And I just share concerns about the timeline and making sure that we're on top of that. It's going to be critical to us starting our operation. So I appreciate you coming and just, you know, I look forward to, you know, hearing from you more as we develop this, develop our CCA. So it's always good to see you. Thank you for clarifying what was in the Voice of San Diego as well. That is a concern of mine as well. It is good to hear the perspective of SDG&E and understanding that, you know, of our five cities, you have larger bandwidth. At the same time, we want to take advantage as much as we can to ensure the success of the CCA. So I just appreciate your clarifying that. And like I said, good to see you.
Likewise. Thank you.
Great comments. And I think that really kind of nails it down, which is essentially, you know, let's continue to communicate and through the board or through Cody or through our vendors as early as possible, identifying any issues that may present itself with the rollout of this billing system, because it is critical for us and it's critical for you as well. So thank you for being with us, Warren. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for having me and we serve it your pleasure. You call, text, email. If you need anything, we're here for you.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right. You too. All right. Let's move to public comment. We have, let's see. I think, Megan, you said we have five people that committed comments. And let me just say from the get-go that it's, you know, I think that all of us have kind of, have been trying to deal with the challenge of public input and, you know, get back to what was, you know, you know, the norm before COVID and allowing for real-time, you know, feedback onto what we're doing. And so I think that we may be moving our public comment in the future to more of a real-time situation as is happening in other municipalities and county governments. I hope that we can do that as of the next meeting so that folks can participate however they want to participate and that they can give us real-time feedback on what we're doing. Because I think it's critically important, especially with the task that we have. And so let's move to public comment. I believe we have five people that have filled out cards and would like to address us. And this is a public comment on items that are not on our agenda.
Our first public comment, first I want to apologize if I mispronounce anyone's name, but this is from Michelle Krug. She did request that we give her a call so that she can verbally give her comments. But since that's not our process at the time, I'm going to go ahead and read what she wrote. "The process used to choose advisory committee member for the CEO select committee was wrong. Robert's Rules nearly revised 11th Edition Sections 31 and 46 clearly say that in any election, the call for nomination allows for all candidates that wish to be considered be offered that opportunity before nominations are closed. Then candidates have the opportunity to speak about themselves before an election was called. At the advisory meeting, all candidates were not considered before a vote was taken on the first candidate nominated. This is completely against Robert's Rules transparency and fair elections. This election needs to be redone. This election should not have happened with three members not yet even appointed. The advisory committee could have met after the Tula Vista appointments were approved by the Tula Vista Council before this board meeting took place." Our next comment is from Matthew Vasilakis. He writes, "Dear Board Chair and Board Members, on behalf of Climate Action Campaign, we would like to express our support for the development of a local development business plan. It is our understanding that the recent contract with Calpine may include funds for similar purposes and we encourage the board to give direction on this item to help guide SDCP towards a local clean energy future. We also strongly urge the board to direct SDCP Council to sign on to an amicus brief for a pending case on the state appellate court led by the local nonprofit Protect Our Communities, challenging the unfair California Public Utilities Commission 2018 PCIA exit fee decision, which unless rectified, will have serious negative impacts on SDCP's ability to build out a local clean energy system. It is imperative for SDCP to engage on this issue as soon as possible to protect the program's ability to develop local clean power and signal its willingness to lead on statewide energy issues." Thank you. Our next comment is from Hammond Climate Solutions. "We support a friend of the court brief from," I'm sorry, there are some weird characters in the document that I have. I apologize. "We support the friend of the court brief from San Diego Community Power opposing SDG&E's egregious exit fee. This participation would show that SDCP is ready to fight to meet its 100% local clean energy goals and is willing to stand up to the investor-owned utility attacks on solar CCE slash clean energy." Our next public comment is from David Harris. "I am representing San Diego 350, a mostly volunteer organization involved in climate change education and advocacy on state and local policies. We support the dedicated effort of SDCP to provide clean energy at competitive rates to residents and businesses in our region. We are concerned about the CPUC's exit fee decision and how it inflates the electric rate that will be charged to SDCP's customers. We encourage the SDCP Board to consider filing an amicus brief in support of the Protect Our Communities Foundation lawsuit, which was filed in the state appellate court." Our final public comment is from Alan Kadru. "Hello, my name is Alan Kadru, CEO of Indian Energy. We are a native-owned energy development firm with an emphasis on resilient and sustainable utility-scale microgrid solutions, focusing on mutually beneficial tribal and local community partnerships. For nearly a decade, we have been ingrained in the San Diego community, working with tribes, the military, and private partners alike. I'm here to introduce you to Indian Energy and show unwavering support for your objectives. We are underway with a significant program to support the San Diego communities to achieve local and regional energy resiliency, which is 100% renewable, resilient, and brings great economic benefit and partnership as a byproduct. To the board and Ms. Huben, I want to thank you for your leadership to the city. And to the community listening, I want to encourage you that we are almost there. We look forward to finding ways in which our communities' programs can partner, and I thank you for your time today." That concludes the public comments.
All right. Thank you, Megan. So before you is the agenda for tonight. And item number one is consent calendar, which exclusively consists of the approval of minutes from April 23rd. Do we have any comments as to the minutes or a motion?
A motion. Board Member West? Baber, second.
All right. We have a motion and a second.
Board Member Montgomery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member Baber, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member West, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
Oh, abstain. I haven't reviewed the meeting.
And Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
The motion carries with Board Member Montgomery, Baber, and West and Chair Moscow voting yes and Vice Chair Padilla abstaining.
All right. Well, let's move to our regular agenda. And that is going to be item number two, which is Operations and Administration Report. And that is given by our interim executive director, Cody Huben.
All right. Thank you. Hi, everybody. Okay, so hopefully you have the report in front of you. This is our monthly Operations and Administration Report. I'll just run down the list and feel free to ask me any questions if you'd like. The first item is talking about COVID impact. And we've been monitoring this as well as I'm sure all of you have in your cities. I feel like we've been functioning quite productively via remote, at least as well as we can do. And we're willing and happy to move the public comments to real-time. And as you said, Chair Moscow, for the next meeting, I'm seeing other public meetings do that. And then from an operations standpoint, we're looking at any changes that happen. We're going to move back to being live as much as we can and we'll keep monitoring that. From a business standpoint, we're also monitoring COVID impacts and our consultants are as well. And we'll keep you apprised of anything that comes up related to that. The next item is a financial update and there's an agenda item later. So I won't go into too much detail here, but we have had some changes since the last board meeting on our financial status. And happy to come full circle in the last month and we're in a good position. But we'll give you an update on another item on this agenda. And then we'd also like to bring next month, an update on fiscal year budget and a summary of some of our expenditures to date, just to start sharing that information. And one of the many things we're doing as we become a real organization. And the next item here is that we typically present out on our solicitations. So we currently have an RFP, Request for Proposals, open for Marketing and Communication Services. We released that on April 30th and it closes tomorrow, actually. So it's a fairly broad scope of work that covers all things from branding and community outreach to media relations and a whole slew of things in between. And we posted this on our website. So if anybody wants to read the scope and the detail, it's there under Resources. And depending on the response volume, I've done a lot of procurements at the local level over the years. And I've never received quite so many questions as I have on this RFP. So we're seeing a lot of interest and depending on the volume of responses that we get, we're hoping to be able to bring forward a contract for recommendation at the next board meeting. And later in the. And later in the agenda, we'll also have a presentation from our energy consulting firm, Pacific Energy Advisors, and we'll talk more about another solicitation that's open around local resource adequacy. We've had a few committee meetings since the last board meeting as well. We've had the finance and risk management committees with their second meeting. They held it on May 2nd and a couple of things they discussed was agreeing to set monthly meetings that we feel like we were trying to approach that in an ad hoc basis, but there's enough for them to discuss, at least for the remainder of 2020, that we wanted to set monthly meetings. And then they discussed essentially everything that's on the agenda here today, so I don't need to cover that in detail, but we covered financing, power procurement and portfolio management decisions and timelines, which you'll be hearing about. Now, the other committee meeting was the community advisory committee. They had their inaugural meeting and on May 22nd and they were sworn in. They elected an interim chair, waiting to just elect the permanent chair position until the Trula Vista members were seated, which also is on this agenda tonight. And discussed just some of the foundational items such as just the overview of San Diego Community Power to make sure they all have a familiarity scope of work that the board approved and some next steps, including development of a work plan. And they are looking forward to having the Trula Vista members seated, hopefully after tonight. And then discussions with San Diego Gas and Electric is another standing update we provide. And just to summarize here of some of the discussions we've been having, including what you heard already, discussions around power procurement and customer information system transition and how that affects essentially SDCP's timeline and just general kind of open engagement. We at SDCP really try to demonstrate that we are open and interested in collaboration and just at least good partnership. And since we share customers and we won't always agree, but we want to be good partners in any way that we can. And then the last thing that we always provide here is a regulatory update. So we provided some summary here in the text of the report and then attached Ty Tostol's monthly regulatory report, which you could read extensively. Updates on the variety of regulatory activities that are happening that we're engaged in. We monitor a lot and engage in a variety that we think are appropriate to that could affect the operations and the business or the goals of San Diego Community Power. They're summarized here. The one thing that I will call out is we have completed all of our filings with the California Public Utilities Commission, the CPUC. And we submitted all of our materials, including our bond payment was submitted or is being submitted today. I don't know if they've received it yet, but it was sent for registration, which means that we are fully submitted and completed our CCA registration process with the CPUC, which was no small task. And I believe that is the extent of my report. I believe Ty Tostol's on the line. If you want to discuss any regulatory items, he can dive into that with you and provide any updates that you'd like.
Well, thank you, Cody, and thank you, Ty. I always enjoy all of your information. Obviously, it's critically important that we understand the landscape. And so thank you for for looking after our interest and educating us on everything that's going on. What, do you have any comments in terms of the, I don't know if you saw the Voice of San Diego article about the the resource adequacy energy and SDGNE's response and then SDGNE's response tonight? In terms of the competitive nature, you know, are they required to go to kind of the market like they are? Or is it possible that we could all sit down and, you know, we all, we share customers and obviously they acquired this, this, this energy for our customers. And so isn't it, wouldn't it be a fair point to actually sit down and work out a deal, which is in the best interest of our mutual customers? I guess just to see if you have any comments, you know, they're obviously saying that it's that their hands are tied in some way and they have to go to the competitive process of, you know, open bids.
Thank you, Chair Moscow. I am not aware of any explicit requirement that would force SDGNE to pursue that particular route in terms of, in terms of the sale of resource adequacy. They do have some flexibility in what they're able to do. And in terms of, in terms of what, you know, applicable standards apply, you know, we are in somewhat uncharted territory. The utilities have never had to look at their portfolios in light of the growth of CCA programs and departing load. So for, I think for a lot of, a lot of us in the space, this is new. But again, I'm not aware of any specific requirement that would force them to pursue that particular option.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to raise that same question with PEA. Hold on for one second, Board Member Baber, and I'll come right to you. I'm going to raise that same question with PEA, but later on. I'm also going to raise with PEA later on, the RFO that just went out for RA, for resource adequacy. I thought that that had already closed and so I just wanted to understand what the response was to that, to that bid and also kind of work in the response of SDGNE and how that all fits together so that the board is completely aware and understanding and we can also make sure our customers in the public understand as well. So thank you. And then Cody, you were, SDGNE talked a little bit about the timeline and the rollout of billing process. From your point of view, it's going well?
Yes, I think so. I mean, we are having a kickoff meeting with Calpine, who we also signed a contract with last month and they are meeting regularly with them. One of the benefits of selecting them. So we will bring that up with them as a check in point regularly to make sure from their perspective, who working, they're working very closely with SDGNE on the data connectivity, how that's going and we'll keep the board apprised of any issues that we see.
All right. Board Member Baber.
This was a question for Ty, but you know, as I thought about it, might be a question for our chair. Can you hear me, Mr. Chair?
I can.
One of our non-agenda public comment speakers mentioned signing on to an amicus brief on a case that was relevant to us. Is that something in your jurisdiction or is that we talked to our general counsel or Mr. Chair, do you want to think about that? Because I don't know the practice. Do CCAs generally sign on to amicus briefs? Because I can foresee a future where we might want to, it would be in our best interest, but I don't know the the protocol for that.
I think that that probably would be within Ryan's wheelhouse or general counsel and I'm fine if you want to, what we could do is we can agendize this for a closed session discussion. Talk about potentially joining an amicus brief in that litigation. Would that be?
Need a motion?
We need a motion or can that just be direction, Cody?
I think it's just direction. So I think it's direction. It's not, you know, it's not on the, it's not officially on the docket. So I've just asked you, Mr. Chair, to consider bringing that back on a future agenda. How about that?
I think, I think that's good. So I will ask that our general counsel bring that perhaps, I think it may be time sensitive. So let's let's agendize it for, for next month's meeting, closed session discussion of potentially joining as an amicus brief in that litigation.
Good. And Ty, I don't know if you know anything about the case or you were tracking it. Just curious.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Baber. I was very much involved in the regulatory proceeding that is at issue in the case before the Court of Appeal. So I do have a lot of backgrounds in that proceeding and familiarity with the issues.
Well, I stand corrected then. My apologies, Ty. If you can collaborate with Ryan, we're all on the same team. So you can collaborate with Ryan. And I was only meaning that it was in, within the general counsel's wheelhouse, but certainly if you're, you know, you know, an expert on this, I would love for you to collaborate with Ryan.
Absolutely. And it may, it may be the case that it is in the general counsel's wheelhouse, but happy to collaborate and figure it out and work together to get you the information you need to make a decision.
We'll take that back and we'll work as a team on that.
Perfect. All right. Any other board member comments?
Yeah, just, just one. Just interested to know too, from the team, when you all get together on this issue with regards to the exit fee and whether we want to join in on the case. I think there are some deadlines coming up fairly soon, so it may require us to call a special closed session or something like that. So just a heads up on that.
Thank you. Fair comment. Can you, Ty and Ryan and Cody work together to determine what the timeline needs to be here? It sounds like we're willing to do a special meeting if necessary, if it can't wait to, what is it? June 25th is our next meeting.
We will. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Right. Thank you, Board Member Montgomery. Any other board members? Comments on, on the operations and administration report?
Just one thing. And this is really just a Ms. Huben and I were actually able to join UCSD students on a Zoom call and talk about community power and I just want you to know that I was really, really impressed. Ms. Huben, you did a great job explaining to the students and really advocating for San Diego Community Power. So thank you so much. And I think it really meant a lot to those students and also to really getting word out to our general public. So thank you very much.
Of course. Thank you.
All right. Well, I think that's it. Thank you. This is a receive and file, so we will receive it and file it. Thank you, Cody. And we're going to move to item number three, which is a report from the Ad Hoc Committee on Chief Executive Officer Recruitment. And I believe that our interim executive officer will drop off the call for this moment. All right. And so I see that Cody has dropped off. So let me give you a report. We spoke a little bit about this at our last meeting and so you have some of the highlights of what's been going on, but let me, let me just kind of get, get you up from our last board meeting. I think the biggest news to bear with you is that the deadline for submission for our CEO position has closed. It was May 20th and we've received 50 applications. So, so a lot of people are interested and I, you know, it's, it's San Diego. It's paradise, right? Who wouldn't want to work in San Diego and who wouldn't want to work for us, the, you know, this startup organization? So no surprise, but, but 58 applications was a pretty, pretty good kind of outcome here. And so where do we go from here? So the next steps are our recruiter, Bill Avery, has, has looked at the 58 application and put it into several different buckets. One of them is, you know, very qualified and viable candidates. And then there's another kind of bucket. And so and so there are right now 12 to 13 candidates in that very, very qualified viable bucket. And so what's going to happen from, from that point is our ad hoc committee consisting of myself and Vice Chair Padilla and working with Sean Marshall of Lean Energy, our consultant who's on the line now, and, and also Bill Avery, our executive recruiter, will look at those, those applications and and narrow it down to, from, from the 58 to, and confirm 12 to 13 are absolutely the ones that we want to take a look at. We'll look through the box, the, the area where Bill was saying, well, maybe, maybe these aren't so good. We'll look through all of them. We'll have access to all of them and we'll confirm that these are the 12 to 13 that we want to look at. Then what we're going to do is we're going to have a panel. A panel of folks that are going to look at those 12 to 13. The panel is going to consist of myself and Vice Chair Steve Padilla, Sean Marshall from Lean Energy, Bill Avery, our, our executive recruiter. We've also been able to recruit the CEO of Clean Power Alliance, Ted Burdacki, who is Clean Power Alliance, as you know, is the joint venture between LA County and Ventura County. So he's going to join us on that panel discussion, the largest CCA in the state. So he understands what of our CC for our CEO would be. And also we invited our community advisory committee to assign somebody from, from their group to join us. And at our last, at the last meeting, the community advisory committee, which I joined them for their inaugural meeting, they appointed Tara Hammond to join us on that panel discussion, on that panel. So the panel will, will look at the 12 to 13 candidates and then they'll narrow it down. We'll get together and, and talk about it and we'll narrow it down to six to seven candidates that we want to interview in person. And then we'll extend invitations to the six to seven people. I think we're going to have the interviews up in, well, here in the city of Encinitas. I was saying up, like as if I'm in San Diego. Here in Encinitas in our beautiful community center, which has enough room for all of us physically distancing and following all the health directives. And so we'll interview in person of those six to seven people. Our hope is that what we would do after that all day event is to narrow it down to two to three people, two to three candidates. And then those two to three candidates would be interviewed by the board in closed session on June 25th. Oh, let me back up. The, the interview of the six to seven will happen on June 16th. The interview, once we narrow it down to two people, that interview will happen, I hope, by the Board of Directors, us, on June 25th. And that will occur just before our regular open session meeting. And so I think that Sebastian has already sent out an email and said, save the date, which is the June 25th, noon to 4:30. So then we are tentative planning on, we would interview them closed session at the Encinitas Community Center. Again, plenty of room for all of us. And then what we would do is we would go down to the Encinitas City Council Chambers to have our board meeting at five. And, and so then, and then what we're planning after that is that we would, we would start to negotiate. Hopefully we would decide upon a candidate on the 25th and then we would engage in negotiation with that candidate. And hopefully have on open session sometime in July, the hiring of that candidate and an announcement of the compensation package. Also wanted to say that we did engage the city of Encinitas HR department much in the same kind of way that we've engaged the city of San Diego and the city of La Mesa to help us with the HR aspects of hiring our first employee. And so the HR Director for Encinitas, Tom, will join us later on, but he is helping us with the benefits package and also onboarding, which we would start hopefully around August. So that is kind of my report and what I want to do is hand it over to Vice Chair Steve Padilla if, if he has anything to add to that. Being kind of part of the partnership here on the, the ad hoc committee. And also Sean, later on, if you wanted to add anything to that as well. Steve?
Nothing really to add, Mr. Chairman. I think you covered it pretty comprehensively in terms of the update about the process and who's going to participate. So no really additional.
All right. Sean?
Nothing to add, other than I think you guys should be excited about your candidate pool and know that you set a record in the state for the number of applicants for a CEO position. So hats off there and I think you're going to be in good shape.
Yeah, I mean, I've just started looking at some of the resumes and gosh, it is very difficult to to narrow it down. And so I'm interested in hearing when the panel gets together, just their thoughts. And so it's, we have some really awesome candidates to choose from. And so that's, 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 it's great to have. So let me open this up. Any questions or comments by my fellow board members? It looks like I have a hand raised, but I can't see it. Anybody, has anybody raised their hand?
Chair Moscow, it's a member of the public that has raised their hand.
Oh, that's where I see the hand. Oh, all right. Did we have any public comment on this item? Megan, did we, did we receive any public comment on this item?
No, we only have.
No, we only have, the public items are only now for item six and item seven.
All right, all right. Just out of fairness, I would love to go to that person that's raising their hand. But just out of fairness, just because we didn't notice it that way, I'm going to refrain from doing that just because other folks didn't have the same kind of allowance and they didn't know that they could do that. So I don't want to, I don't want to kind of do that. So we'll just come back to the board. If there's no other discussion, this was a receive and file and we'll receive it and file it. All right. So then let's move on to item number four, and I will just pause for a moment so that we can bring our interim executive officer back online.
I'm messaging Ms. Hoven right now.
Thank you, Ryan. Cody, are you with it?
I'm back.
All right. Well, let's move to item number four, which is an update on River City Bank Financing and Promissory Note. And with B-Quest Foundation, Cody alluded to this slight change, which I think is an exciting change. It was always an exciting situation, but I think it's gotten even more exciting. So if you want to talk about this, Cody, you're, you can take this down.
Sure. I'll give an introduction and we have Glenn Price, also with BBNK, our same firms, our general counsel on. He has been our financial general counsel on this and I have to give him credit. This has been a ton of work and he has kept up on a vast amount of documents and a vast amount of questions from me. And so thanks, Glenn. Just a quick intro and then I'll turn it over to him. So the board at the last meeting approved a credit banking service agreement with River City Bank. We've been discussing this for several months now and that moved forward. That was contingent upon a $5 million collateral loan from Emerald Blue. And there's been some changes to that. And so we now have a second lender providing funding. And I think Chair Moscow, I agree with you. It's an exciting change. It's, it shows in addition to Emerald Blue, they, they reduced their collateral down to 3 million and was supplemented to reach back to the 5 million by a local foundation called B-Quest. And who also, it's a local organization that invests in climate action and other housing and, and other issues in the San Diego region. And similar to Emerald Blue, wanted to see us be successful. And in light of all the changes with COVID and the impacts and pressures on all of our general funds that are various capacities, and this is a huge benefit to us that these organizations not only want to see us succeed, but are willing to contribute to that to make sure that we do and, and that we don't have to tap into our general funds. And so I'm super appreciative and excited to have these investors be partners with us. And I will turn it over to Glenn now for the, some of the more detailed questions and information. And if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Thanks, Cody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
As Cody mentioned, following the last board meeting where the $5 million loan from Emerald Blue was approved, we were approached by Emerald Blue asking if we could explore bringing in another nonprofit that was supportive of the, of the CCA's efforts. And we approached B-Quest and they were kind enough to come forward with $2 million in financing, which took some of the pressure off of Emerald Blue and allowed them to share the risk of the $5 million loan with another, with another nonprofit that was supportive of these efforts. So the terms remained exactly the same. The only change is that Emerald Blue, or that B-Quest stepped in to provide 2 million of the 5 million, and that reduced Emerald Blue from 5 million to 3 million. All other terms are exactly the same as the board approved with Emerald Blue. So there's, there's really no change other than having another, another nonprofit step in and be supportive of the efforts. So what we're asking today is just for the board to go ahead and ratify the execution of the promissory note with B-Quest, given that they were not part of the initial approval of the $5 million in funding with Emerald Blue.
Perfect. Thank you. I think it's important to note again that this isn't an additional amount. It's the same thing that we were looking at before. So it's the $5 million collateral funding obligation. And it's just now we have a quest with Emerald Blue that combined together makes up the $5 million collateral. But, and the terms are basically, are the same. So any board member comments, questions? I don't see anybody raising their hands. Shout out if you have any questions. And I don't believe we have any.
Good question. Go ahead, go ahead, Vice Chair.
No, I was just going to congratulate Cody and, and consultant team on, you know, aggressively getting after a changing circumstance and coming up with a pretty cool solution, actually I think is an improvement. So my congratulations. And I apologize, Mr. Chairman, just for some reason, I use this platform all the time. My little hand icon is nowhere to be found. Tried every configuration and I've tried, and so if you see me doing the, you know, my house is on fire, you'll know. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Sorry, Mr. West, it means definitely.
No, no worries, Vice Chair. I, 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 I would like to propose that we, this financing that Mr. Price and Cody worked on is awesome. I think it's, this is in many ways a better, better than what we originally went out to. And I would like to see the board, all of us get together and do a little thank you to each one of, to B-Quest and to Emerald Blue that is from each one of us to say, thank you for doing this and thank you for being a part of the future of Clean Power in San Diego and our cities.
Or remember Wes, is that a, is that a motion?
It is a motion.
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion or questions on that motion?
I also make, make Mark West the Chair of the Thank, Go Be Thankful Committee.
Is that a motion? Is he going to bring, is he going to bring from his garden?
Yes.
All right. We have a motion and a second. We will vote.
Board Member Montgomery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member Baber, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member West, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
Perfect. Let's move on to item number five, which is the approval of Tennesca Power Services for SDCP.
Chairman, really quick, this Glenn Price, if we could do a motion just to do the ratification of the B-Quest note?
Oh, I thought that's what my motion, the motion was, but.
I understood your motion to be on a thank you note. So I'm sorry if I.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's me for being satire. That was a joke. My, my intention was to do the ratification, the promissory note.
Yeah, Mark, Mark, Mark was the one that moved the rec, the, the, the vast recommendation. And then Board Member Baber being, was joking, but he, he also seconded.
Yes. Sorry. No joking for you guys.
Okay, we're good.
Thank you.
All right, perfect. Let's move on to item number five, which is approval of Tennesca Power Services for SDCP scheduling coordination services. You'll recall we had an RFP, I think, at the beginning of the year. And we ended up hiring Pacific Energy Advisors. And one of the services that they did not provide was the scheduling coordination with Cal ISO. And so before you tonight is the Tennesca Power Services. So they will be providing us with, with scheduling coordination with Cal ISO for what, two and a half years, Cody?
Yeah, that's right.
All right. Perfect. Well, here, you can take it over.
Thank you. So you've set this up perfectly, that we solicited this as part of a broader wholesale power procurement package. And Pacific Energy Advisors was also selected out of that procurement. And this is for schedule coordination and settlement services. We don't necessarily need this immediately, which is why you're seeing this come later than the Pacific Energy Advisors contract. But now that we have funding and now that we're just, you know, checking, checking off things off our list, this is the next one up. And we selected Tennesca. There was six proposers as part of that package that submitted bids. And we felt Tennesca was the strongest for a variety of reasons. And presenting the selection summary in our, in our report for you. And they just, you know, they have broad experience with power scheduling across the region, including in California. And they, they scored a little higher on pricing, but agreed to drop their prices to be super competitive, which we were happy with. And they're just incredibly knowledgeable, firm and, and easy to work with and had very high recommendations. And Sean, actually Sean Marshall with Lean Energy, who you all know very well by now. They always say my right hand in all of the things that we do. She has been actually leading a lot of the work on this. So I want to give her a moment to see if she has anything else to add. And Tennesca folks were not actually able to be on the meeting tonight, I don't believe. And we'll take a look through their participants quickly. And in the meantime, Sean, if you please on the spot, you have anything to add?
All I would add is that unfortunately Kerry Morris, who is, who is our account rep and Director of Origination, is not able to be with us tonight. We had a previous engagement. And so I'm just on behalf, you know, on behalf of Kerry and Tennesca, to let you know that Tennesca is based headquartered in Texas. However, they've had a footprint in the California market since 2012. Kerry has an office in Southern California outside of Riverside. So he's quite accessible to us. And they've been very amenable and we worked well in negotiating the contract. I will tell you that we have one remaining issue as of yesterday related to insurance. And hats off to Ryan Baron of BBK, who helped bring that to ground and a number of other critical issues. And they just sent an email this afternoon that their management had signed off on the final change. So the good news is that the contract is now complete to our, to SDCP satisfaction, which is great news. And so we should be able to move ahead. I will also just say that Tennesca works in a variety of functions throughout the state of California. Schedule coordination is one of them, but they also provide power marketing services, resource adequacy. And they're working with nearly all of the CCA, the operational CCAs in various capacities. So they do come with quite a bit of California experience and CCA experience. And that's, that will conclude my remarks.
All right.
Thank you.
Any questions, any questions by board members of staff? I don't believe we have any.
Chair, just one, one question for Sean, since you mentioned the last change that was finalized today. So we can still move staff recommendation and we, we should be fine with that change?
Correct. In fact, we got the change we were seeking. So that was the good news.
Okay. All right. So I will move staff recommendation.
Good. I think that we had one board member, Montgomery, I think that the recommendation up on the board here is, is slightly different than what our general counsel is offering. So I think that the item number, the recommendation one is, is correct. Recommendation two should authorize the interim executive officer to execute the agreement in substantially similar form as reviewed and approved by general counsel.
Yes.
You're welcome, Ryan. Board Member Montgomery, would that be your motion?
Yes, that's my motion.
Okay, I'll second it, Member Baber.
Do we have any comments on that motion? Not seeing any hands or anybody jumping around. It's hard for me to see if people are jumping around too. So, all right, let's go to vote.
Board Member Montgomery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member Baber, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member West, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
Well, let's move on to the next item. Item number six, presentation on type categories of power procurement, procurement board approval, timeline, RPS and GHD free targets and risk management policy with delegation authority. Well, that's a mouthful. It also is, 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 it's also indicating how complex this topic is. And I really do envision that working with PEA, that we'll have many discussions on our energy procurement and our portfolio, energy portfolio, the one that we want to have as a, as an organization and as a support. So I envision what we'll do is this is just the start of kind of kicking off these discussions. But be, you know, feel free to, to, to give us your feedback on how you think that, you know, you want to receive this information. Do we want to receive it in a board setting like this? Do we want to have workshops in the future where we have, we can have a little bit more time to kind of really think about what's being presented and ask questions? I have asked PEA to start to, to think about the themes that they want to present and also align that with the decisions that are going to be asked of this board to make. And so hopefully we'll start to do that. But this is really complex stuff and, and we're trying to make it as easily digestible and spread it out in a way that makes the most amount of sense. So I will, is it Sam from PEA that's going to take this item or, or Cody?
Okay, great. Thanks. And I see Kirby's teed up and ready to go. And I'll just give, I mean, again, you did a great intro. So I don't really need to add much to that. But we do want to make sure that there is a lot to digest by the board. And so we want to make sure that Pacific Energy Advisors can get on hopefully every agenda for the rest of the year and do kind of one part education and one part decision-making and, and updates as needed. So this is what you're seeing today. And the Finance and Risk Management Committee has previewed this and gives us some nice suggestions to make it even more digestible. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Kirby to take over.
Well, thank you. Hopefully y'all can hear me okay. Maybe just a quick comment on that, that educational piece of the puzzle. I think that's a, that's an area that's, it's just super important. I mean, we're in a, a complex industry with lots of new terminology, new concepts. And, you know, I think one of the things that we really pride ourselves on is contributing to the education of boards like yours, key staff members and so forth, as well as members of the public too. You know, it's all, it's very important that we're all on the same page, that we, we have the same understanding when we, when we use terminology and have the same understanding in terms of the process that we're going to take. And this particular item tonight is really getting into that as it relates to the early stages of SDCP's procurement efforts. And so we're going to touch on two items. I'll be covering the first. That's really kind of walking through some of the upcoming products that you'll be needing to buy in order to serve your customers, starting in 2021. And, and some of the items that are on that, you know, punch list, if you will, in terms of responding to RFPs that are out there now, issuing your own RFPs, and then undertaking various other procurement efforts between now and when you start serving customers. And then we're going to jump on over and Sam's going to cover the introduction to the energy risk management policy and the delegation of authority. And, and those, those are really appropriate to address together because they're highly related. So without further ado, maybe we can move on in here. Great. Fantastic. Well, as I just mentioned, wanted to touch briefly on some of the products, the key products that you will need to procure as a retail seller in California's energy space. And you can see here that we've got four items mentioned. And in addition to those four items, that are kind of characterized as energy products, you've already just covered in the last agenda item, one of the key services that you'll need, which is scheduling coordination. So in order to integrate certain of the pieces of the puzzle that we'll be talking about on this slide here, you'll need to rely on your scheduling coordinator, Tennesca. And so that, that's, that's just one other connection that I wanted to make sure I made for you all. But let's go ahead and get started here, walking through these items. So the first item, system energy. This is, this is energy that is basically going to be purchased by your organization to help fulfill the needs of your customers. So, you know, this is, this is pretty simple. If you distill it all down, your customers use electric power and as, as the retail provider to. And as, as the retail provider to those customers, you need to buy enough power to make sure that they have what they need at all times. And so there are a number of different suppliers out there that offer this particular product. It can be. Bought in many different ways. And, and I think for the time being, because this is something that'll come up down the road. I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. So when you think of system energy, just think about the electrons that you need to buy in order to make sure that your customers' lights come on. That their AC compressors work and so forth. Now renewable energy, this is starting to move into something that's more of a, a kind of key component of SDCP's overall goals and objectives. So renewable energy. This is a component of your clean energy profile. And when you think renewable energy, think about, think about it in two ways. The state of California mandates that all retail sellers buy a certain quantity of renewable energy. On an annual basis to meet statewide mandates that are handed down. And those mandates are, are addressed in the renewables portfolio standard, which is the overarching state. Law addressing renewable energy procurement. And we're on a trajectory presently. Where we're going to get to 60% renewable energy. So that means all retail sellers. Amongst the mix of power resources they provide to their customers have to ensure that 60%. Of that power is derived from renewable sources by 2030. So we're still a ways off. But between now and then, we've got some interim targets that we need to hit. And, and the 33% target is really what's applicable in the current year and it steps up thereafter, working its way to 60%. By 2030. And you can see here examples of the different. Technology types that are typically associated with renewable energy production, solar, wind and so forth. And then you have what we're referring to here as other GHG free energy. So this is energy. That isn't necessarily eligible to participate in California's renewable portfolio standard program. But is, is still clean or carbon free for purposes of power source reporting. And when you kind of couple renewable energy and other GHG free energy together, that's what comprises your overall, overall carbon free mix. And so when you look at this other GHG free energy item that's listed on the slide here, you might wonder, well, you know, why is some hydroelectricity eligible for the. To count as renewable energy and other is not. And that's, that's because the state. Decided that smaller hydroelectric generators. Could produce eligible renewable energy and the kind of a cutoff size wise is 30 megawatts. Just for context, that's a relatively small scale generating asset. And then generators be above that size. Are not eligible to produce renewable energy that can be counted under the RPS program, but rather. Counted just as carbon free. So when you report out power purchases to your customers, if you buy. Hydroelectricity produced by larger generating assets. You'll be able to, to count it as carbon free and otherwise reduce the emissions intensity of your supply portfolio. And then of course, nuclear assets also produce energy that's recognized as carbon free. Many of the larger utilities rely fairly heavily on nuclear generating resources. But certain of those resources throughout the state are kind of being phased out over time as a matter of policy. And, and so those first three components on the slide here are all, are all energy related, meaning, you know, we're thinking about electrons here. We're thinking about. Power flowing through power lines, going through your meter and enabling various devices in your home. To function. The last item is really a compliance product. So this is resource adequacy capacity or reserve capacity. And this is a product that is purchased as a matter of necessity to ensure that the grid functions reliably. And in the case of California, resource adequacy capacity is required for purchase. At a level that is equivalent to 115% of your expected peak demand. So you basically take the point at which your customers are expected to use electricity most intensively, multiply that by 115%. And that's your, your reserve capacity obligation. And of course, the reason for, for requiring retail sellers like SDCP and San Diego Gas and Electric. To purchase resource adequacy is to address contingencies that might exist during grid operation. So weather's hotter than expected. Generators go offline. You have various outages with the transmission distribution system. Having additional capacity available allows the grid to continue functioning reliably. And you can see here that there are different. Components of the resource adequacy obligation that exists. And two of them are geographic in nature. So you see here that the system designation. And then the local designation, and we'll get into that a little bit more in another slide or two. And then the other is, is a. Is a generating asset attribute. So flex RA or flexible RA, which basically means that the generator. Needs to be able to ramp up quickly. So when you think about flexible RA, kind of think about a Buick relative to a Ferrari, right? The Ferrari can accelerate very quickly. And can stop very quickly and it can do all that just at a moment's notice. Whereas, you know, maybe a 50-year-old Buick. Takes a little bit longer to get up to speed. And with all that mass that it has, it's going to roll for a while, even when you take your foot off the gas. And so. Both have utility in terms of helping the system operate reliably. But you, but you need to have that flexible. Aspect in order to make sure that you can cycle up and cycle down as grid conditions present. So let's go ahead and head on to the next slide.
Kirby, is the flex RA, is that, is that, does that have to be local? As well? Does that have to be within your region? If, if it has to be able to, something that can ramp up real fast, I would imagine flex RA is, is also local.
That, that's more of a system. Attribute. So, you know, it's, it's amongst all of the different RA that you buy. So you could get the flexible attribute within local resources or within system resources. But it's the combination of both that's going to dictate whether or not you meet your obligation. So. It's essentially a subset of your overall resource adequacy procurement obligation. And you can get that from local resources or get that elsewhere on the system. But, but we'll, in, in a minute, as a matter of fact, maybe why not now? I'll, I'll mention that most of your, your resource adequacy obligation is in fact. Local in nature by virtue of the, the spot that you sit in the state. So San Diego is its own local reliability area. Which basically means that you have known resource constraints. And by virtue of the fact that a significant portion of your resource adequacy obligation is local in nature, that also means that kind of by default. A large portion of that, that flexible attribute is going to be, be found in your local resource adequacy capacity. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Can you just, can you just cover again the, 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 the natural constraint?
But so I'm sorry, one more time, the, what, what constraint was it that you were?
What do you mean by that? We're San Diego is because we're, because of how we're situated, we're naturally constrained, therefore local is, is going to be your, where we have to be?
Yeah. So, so you have different areas in the state. And as a matter of fact. I, I tell you, how about we wait two slides and we'll get into that one in a lot more detail. What do you think?
Yeah, absolutely. And you know what? Push back on me because I don't want to drag us down a rabbit hole.
No, no, I, I love the questions and, and you're just. You're, you're thinking ahead and I like that. So that's good. We'll, we'll get to it in just a minute. And there are a variety of local areas in the state. We can, it'll make sense when you see a map. Why it is that those exist. So let's go ahead and just touch on renewable energy really quickly. So there are three flavors, if you will, of renewable energy. And within the vernacular of California's RPS. Or renewables portfolio standard program, these are referred to as portfolio content categories or buckets. So bucket's kind of the common name, but when you see portfolio content category or bucket, just know that it's, it's kind of generically referring to the same thing. So you've got three of these. And by virtue of your JPA agreement, you've essentially decided to, to cut out. Two of the three to the greatest extent practical. And I think. Maybe starting at the bottom with portfolio content category three, which is otherwise known as an unbundled rec or just. An environmental attribute sold separate and apart from the underlying electricity. As I understand it, this is really of no interest to SDCP and, and for all intents and purposes. Has been eliminated from the planning process in terms of specing out your renewable energy requirements. The other two. Buckets, so bucket one and bucket two, maybe we can just touch on those quickly. Bucket one renewable energy is, is. Essentially renewable energy that is sold contemporaneously with the environmental attribute. So there's no. There's no separation or segregation of the renewable energy certificate or rec. And the electricity itself. These are sold at the same time, delivered in parallel to the buyer. By the seller. And in many cases, these bucket one renewable energy producing generators are located within the state of California. They're directly interconnected to the state of California. Or they deliver their power to California in a manner where our grid operator knows what to expect at all times. So there's essentially a sinking effect, if you will. They're the highest cost, but also the highest value renewable energy product that exists. And in substantial part, that's because there are no limitations with the use of bucket one products for compliance purposes. So each of these, these products can be used, but in the case of bucket one renewable energy. The largest portion of your compliance obligation must be fulfilled by bucket one resources. A smaller portion can be fulfilled by bucket two, and then the smallest portion can be, can be served by bucket three. So kind of rounding out the discussion on bucket one, many of these resources are going to be located, meaning physically located within the state. And, you know, I think for purposes of SDCP, if it had its way and could afford to do so, it would buy the significant majority, if not the entirety of its renewable energy requirements from this resource category. The second bucket, bucket two, these are generating resources that are located outside of California. And there's a, there's a bit of a peculiarity and it kind of gets down in the weeds pretty quickly, but. For, for, I think for purposes of simplicity, what's important to know about bucket two is that the generating resource is located outside the state. And it's, if you contract with one of these generators or a supplier of this resource. You're going to specify a certain quantity of bucket two product that you will be buying. And then during the same calendar year, there needs to be an equivalent quantity. Of energy delivered into the state from, from an out of state source. So. There's kind of this pairing, if you will, of the renewable energy and a substitute energy source. Where it allows some temporal flexibility in terms of where the renewable, when the renewable energy is produced and when power is imported into the state. These resources are less costly than the bucket one resources. And there is a limitation in terms of how much of them can be used for purposes of demonstrating regulatory compliance. So. It's a, it's, it's something that we've kind of specked out for planning purposes at a level that is. No greater than the maximum allowed under the, under the compliance program, which is about. 18% of your overall renewable energy supply. So. That's the, the story on renewable energy products. And if you have any questions, by all means, jump in and, and ask. I'm happy to elaborate if, if you'd like. And if there are no questions, we can certainly come back to them. We can move on and talk a little bit more about. Resource adequacy and, and in particular, those local areas that you asked about just a minute ago, Chair Moscow.
I don't see any hands raised, so we can just move on.
And we can, we can always bounce back, of course. So if somebody thinks of something and, and didn't. Have their hand up yet, by all means, interrupt me and we'll go back.
Right. My fellow board members are invited to, if they have questions, please just jump right in. This is such an important information. I want to make sure that we're. Grasping as much as possible and as early as possible.
By the way, this works better, I feel, if you do ask questions. I think it just, it, it really amplifies the learning process. So if you see things that look unfamiliar or don't make sense. Please jump in. Interactive works great for me and hopefully for you as well. But in the case of RA, I mentioned before, there are kind of three pieces of this puzzle that need to be attended to. In order to meet your compliance obligations. And again, you know. There's really, at the end of the day, nothing to, to show for your RA purchases. Other than checking a, you know, we're compliant box. However, if you don't meet your RA compliance obligations, meaning you have a shortfall relative to those particular obligations. Then you can incur financial penalties. And you certainly don't want to do that if at all possible. Now, it's worth noting that the resource adequacy market has tightened quite a bit. There are a number of reasons for that. And, and I'll just kind of go through them very, very quickly. But in, in the case of renewable resources, particularly intermittent renewable resources like solar and wind. You, you simply don't get the same amount of credit for the capacity that those generating assets have been as you used to. And that's because the, the grid operator has essentially learned that. These intermittent resources don't provide the same benefit to system reliability by virtue of the fact that. In the case of solar, for example, if a big cloud goes over a big solar array, all that. Potential production drops almost instantaneously. And that's a problem when you're trying to operate the grid reliably. So they basically degraded. The capacity from those sorts of resources that you can count towards your resource adequacy obligation. There are also various other generators that are, that use fossil fuel to produce electricity. That are slowly coming offline by virtue of environmental policy that restricts the use of. A technology called once-through cooling. So basically using seawater for generating resources located along the coast. And, and of course, that, that was found to be detrimental to the environment. So these, these generating assets are being. Basically approaching the end of their, their life in, in terms of their ability to operate in a state. So that's kind of tightened the market as well. And, and so there's increased competition for, for a lower level of capacity right now. And when you're out there buying resource adequacy, as I mentioned before. Some of that capacity can come from the system at large, basically anywhere in the state, more or less. And then others, and in the case of SDCP, needs to come from the San Diego local reliability area. And so you can see mapped out here on the state, a legend. You can see that the shaded areas and then a legend for each one of the local capacity or local reliability areas that's been defined by the California Independent System Operator. And in some cases, you'll notice that like for the Greater Bay Area, for example, which is right there. By the San Francisco Bay Area. That's, you know, densely populated location that's resource constrained. And so it's very important. That the grid operator has a certain amount of capacity online at all times within that Greater Bay Area region to promote system live reliability. And then the same is kind of true in, in other areas like the LA basin. And then in the case of say like Humboldt, which is there up north. You know, that, that's kind of like the end of the line, if you will. So. It's not really a generation rich area. And due to that, that particular concern, it's very important that they have. Available generating assets standing by at all times in case, you know, one of the, the relatively small number of assets. That's located in that area happens to go down. So there are different considerations in different areas. And in the case of San Diego, you have a relatively highly populated area. And again, it's kind of at the end of the line. So. That's why it's really important that you as a retail seller contribute to grid reliability within the area that your customers are located. And, and as a result, you know, a significant portion of your resource adequacy obligation must be procured right, right here in San Diego.
So Kirby, so, so we're somewhat analogous to Humboldt. In terms of just the kind of the, the opposite, you know, at the end of the lines and that the, the lack of generation within the basin.
Yeah, th- those are two pieces of a puzzle coupled with the fact that you've got a lot more people here. You, which is kind of like a, you know, a third, third spoke in that wheel relative to Humboldt. So Humboldt isn't as densely populated. But it's, but it's definitely resource constrained. In your case, you're densely populated and resource constrained.
So then, in what, what percentage is local as opposed to system or flex?
That is.
That sounds like a subset of local, of the local RA.
Yeah. So, so the local, local RA, I think is a percentage of.
Yeah. So, so the local, local RA, I think is a percentage of the whole. John, the lessy, do you happen to be on the line?
Yeah, yeah, can you, so it's, it's seventy to eighty percent. So it's definitely the majority of your overall requirements. And that would be even during the more peak months during the summer. You get into the, the less energy intensive months, the, you know, spring, fall. The entirety of your resource adequacy obligation for those months could be, could be local. So it, it, it's really defined also by the transmission constraints into and out of the area. You know, if, if there's, there's only so much transfer capability into San Diego. And so that means that because there's, there's more load there, you have to have internal generation to serve the load. So you can serve load through internal generation or through transmission to generation located in other parts of the state. Or even, or, you know, even Arizona and out of state across the grid. But the transmission limits really define these local areas.
All right. Thank you. I think board member Baber has a question, so I'll let him jump in.
It look, when I look at that map, would you say that, maybe you have, forgive me. Our area is co extensive with SDG and E service area?
Yeah, that's, that's essentially the case. Yeah. So, you know, I think getting back to what, what John was saying, you know, if you think of, of the transmission system like a, a network of, of pipes that deliver water. You know, you can only fit so many electrons through a transmission line. Just like you can only, you know, fit so many gallons of water through a pipe. And when your customers are using a lot of electricity and essentially requiring that pipe. To be full to the point that no more energy can be transmitted through it. It becomes increasingly important that you have generating assets located in proximity to the customers that are using electric power. So, you know, you, you take all those pieces of the puzzle together and, 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 you know, as, as John was mentioning there. With the transmission constraints, that's, that's a key piece of the puzzle and contributory to how it is that these, these. Reliability areas are defined. And then I, I kind of already touched on the, the flexible RA attribute. So this isn't necessarily a category unto its own. It's, it's an attribute that's ascribed to generating resources based on their operational characteristics. And the flexibility that they can exhibit while they're operating. So they need to be able to kind of ramp up and ramp down quickly. And, and, and as a result of that need, in order to reliably operate the system, you'll be required to. To, to procure from generating assets that, that have that particular attribute. And I think that one of the really important things that I want to mention on this particular slide here is, is the third arrow or bullet. That when you buy RA. You're, you're not necessarily buying the electricity produced by those generating assets. So you're, you're essentially making a commitment to a generator. And the generator is making a kind of similar commitment to you that, that it will be available. You need it to be available, so it will be available to produce power. Whether it produces power or not. It is really kind of beside the point when it comes to, to resource adequacy compliance. It's, it's simply your obligation as the buyer of the resource adequacy. To make sure that you have made sufficient commitments to enough generating capacity that will be available on your behalf. Should the grid need it.
Can I follow up with that, Chair?
Yes.
So let me ask it in common language terms then. Does that, because we have, if our area is co extensive with San Diego Gas and Electric. Does that mean everything we purchase as part of resource adequacy, adequacy either comes from SDG and E? Or is a source that's already serving SDG and E? Or is there a source that we could buy from that is not currently under SDG needs orbit?
Yeah, really good question and, and I'll maybe start the answer. And then if John has anything to add, I'd encourage him to weigh in. So as, as John mentioned, you know, seventy to eighty percent of your total resource adequacy procurement obligation will be. You know, in, within the local area, within that San Diego area there at the bottom of the, the map. And, and that leaves a portion of roughly twenty to thirty percent that can be procured from the system at large. So the, the, the system RA definitely doesn't necessarily need to be the same. Generating assets that are currently providing resource adequacy capacity to San Diego Gas and Electric, right? So that portion could be procured from, from generators located virtually anywhere in the state. The, the local RA, it doesn't necessarily need to be the same generating asset that's currently providing resource adequacy to SDG and E. But it, it's a really good question because, because of San Diego's footprints, SDG and E's footprint. Much of that local RA will likely be under contract presently with SDG and E, which is precisely why. We've been involved in coordinative discussions with them on numerous occasions to try to work through that, that. That exercise, if you will, of trying to figure out how it is that we might be able to work with one another. To coax out some of this, this local RA to serve the customers of SDCP. And, and San Diego Gas and Electric has, has a RA solicitation, RFO teed up. That will be released very soon and, and part of the discussion tonight. I think it's in the next agenda item is getting your board's permission to participate in that RFO, which is explicitly for the local RA product.
Oh, but this, this actually is such an excellent point that board member Baber brings up. I mean, in the, in the future, how do we, you know, move beyond, you know, what has already been? How do we basically use our dollars to invest in a way that we're basically giving rise to, to more. Entities that would be, would enable us to meet our local RA? How do we work with the, the brilliant folks that are in San Diego to create more projects, solar? You know, energy storage type projects that would help us in this category?
Yeah, it's, it's a really good question. And I think there, one, one thing to keep in mind here is, is, you know, there, there are some temporal considerations that are certainly in play. One of which is, you know, this RA compliance obligation is, is more or less immediate. So when you're starting, commencing your operations, you will have this, this obligation. And as, as you are likely aware, you know, project development. Schedules and timelines can often take, take, take a while to, to come together, particularly in the current environment that we're in. The pandemic has certainly imposed some challenges on supply chains, permitting processes. Labor availability and so on and so forth. And so, you know, one of the reasons that, that these sorts of solicitations are important. Is, is not only because San Diego Gas and Electric has this particular necessary and important product. To divest and potentially sell to SDCP. But also because you need to allow time for these other projects to, to unfold. And, and I, I'm glad you, you brought that up because it was a note that I had made actually on the, the next slide. But I'll, I'll just go ahead and, and make that now because I know we've got members of the public that are listening in tonight. And I'm, I'm keenly aware and, and I'm reminded regularly that. Supporting local economic development and providing opportunities for local project developers to support. The ongoing operation of SDCP is very important to you. And rightfully so. And I think the, the idea of asking for your board's permission. To participate in SDG and E's solicitations or to issue solicitations of your own. That might not be explicitly focused on local projects shouldn't provide any indication. To these interested parties that you're curtailing those opportunities. I think that, that this is, this is very much kind of a coordinated layered effort, if you will. And sometimes, and in particularly during startup mode, there may be a need to go out and do business. With generating resources that are already in existence and may not necessarily be located in the communities that you serve. But the idea is that through those shorter term relationships, you'll buy time. To allow for these other projects to, to become developed and come online and eventually serve your needs as well as those of your customers. So I think that's.
Chair Moscow? Yeah. Can I, can I ask? So I think, I think, you know, I, we're, I am seeing some. Projects, projects that are moving forward that will help our local RA in the future that I'm, I'm very excited about that are, I've heard of in the process. But I think what this is really important to as we move forward is that I think. We got to move forward, but we don't need to move forward in a way that we're. Quickly just trying to meet the compliance requirements because we need to make sure that we're engaging. All of our local businesses and, and the community and even the workforce. Because if we're not doing those things, I think we're going to go down a conventional path that may not make us as. Innovative as we move forward. So I think, I think I'm very excited that, you know, like when we talk about these things. But I think there, I am hopeful that as we, we can bring new. RA sources online in our general vicinity. Does anybody want to add in on that?
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
This is Sean Mark, if you don't mind.
Don, go ahead.
I, I would just like to make a quick comment, say, in general. Councilmember West, I would absolutely agree with you. I think in, in this case, and Kirby can certainly say more. We are in a tight turnaround on resource adequacy, very tight market. So unfortunately, we've just got a, a current squeeze, you know, from a timing and compliance point of view. But then sort of in the longer term picture, one hundred percent agree and others can say more than I can.
Yeah, I mean, those are all fair points and I, but I think that, that, that I, I would want to drive home. And I mean, I, it's not lost on me the size, the size of our organization and the, 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 the energy load that, that we're responsible for. So I just want to lay that out. I understand, you know, how much, if it's seventy eight, seventy to eighty percent are at local RA, I understand what we're talking about. But I do think it's important to give indicators to the market and to, to, to work with our stakeholders to, to start to. Kind of start to create this market locally for, for RA. And, and basically even if, you know, in the beginning, it's small projects that we're able to aggregate. I think that that's a, a step in the right direction and that we're just growing and, and getting larger in the future. Because for us, you know, local generation, local jobs, local investment is so important.
Yep. That's, that's exactly what I was saying for the future. I agree completely. And Sean, I, I agree with what Sean was saying too.
Can I make a follow up question, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, board member Baber.
I don't know the history of this, but. Was the area set up to basically say, here are the rules for SDG and E? Because no one ever contemplated we would exist and we just inherited those rules? Or was, was this a rule specifically and thoughtfully assigned to? CCAs?
Well, because it's, good. I was, I was just going to say it's a legacy compliance program that's, that's certainly been evolving. But I think, you know, the way to think about it is you're kind of stepping into the middle of it, right? And as did many other CCAs before you. So this was a, you know, a program that was established where once upon a time, you know, ten years ago. Bulk of the participants were the, the three investor on utilities, PG and E. Edison and PG.
Yeah.
And now with, with CCA stepping in. You know, the, essentially the framework has, has been spread more broadly to include. These CCAs that are operating within the, the IOU's footprint. So it's not like there's been specific rules necessarily that are considerate of, of CCAs. This is, you know, I, it's, it's truly just a, it, it's kind of a, a legacy compliance framework. And like I said, you're just, you're stepping into the middle of it and taking a, a share of the obligation based on the, the usage of your customers.
That's, Mr. Chair, that's what I, thank you for that answer. And that's what I suspected. And as we go forward, I know we're a baby organization, but we're going to grow. And we start to look at our long-term legislative and regulatory lobbying efforts. There's a category I would like to add to the list, maybe rethink these rules. Because they're applying it to an entity that didn't even exist when they created the rules. That is a perfect time to start rethinking how rules should be applied.
Right. And I, I agree with that, but, but certainly I think we all know how slow, how slow. The powers to be are going to be to, to kind of change these regulations.
Well, I figured, Joe, I'd ask you now and then in 12 years, you'd get me an answer.
I, I just want to chime in on that, if that's okay. I think on all the things that Kirby's speaking to and, you know, we have a really tight turnaround on compliance. And we're, we're taking that track of immediate compliance, which we need to do. And thinking about the longer term approach of how do we send the signals to the market, as you're saying, and indicate our preference to really work more locally. And, and be more innovative as, as Mark was saying. Those are, those are a really important track that we're, we're on. We're also have a dual track of always thinking about the regulatory and even legislative arena. And how can we concurrently change the rules, so we're complying with the rules and, and bending them to, to the things we want to see per our goals. And then concurrently, how can we change the rules to, to better reflect what we want to see in, in the market? And we have a lot of allies across the state with that. So we're, we're pursuing both at all times.
Yeah. And, you know, I think just also when you're thinking about local project development interests. And, and resource adequacy specifically. I, I certainly think there are plenty of opportunities there. But with, with resource adequacy, because it's a compliance product and because of the way it's kind of viewed by the regulators. It's important to note that, you know, not all capacity will necessarily qualify as eligible to participate in the RA program. So, you know, whether it's a, you know, a smaller project or a certain generating technology or so forth. It's just one of those things where we, we're just going to have to be very deliberate in communicating the various requirements. That, that will be, you know, necessary to attend to if an interested project developer comes along locally. And, and wants to, you know, participate in supplying some of SDCP's RA needs. And that's, that's not to say that, you know. RA is not the only product that you need to buy, right? We've already talked about renewable energy, carbon free energy and so forth. And those are also areas where local projects can, can play very heavily. And, and I, I would certainly expect that to be the case over time. And whether that's a respondent with a project under development that responds to an, an RFO that you issue. Or another project developer that decides to participate in a feed in tariff that you might develop down the line here. You know, I think there are plenty of opportunities, not only to, to support the RA needs, but also the, the broader energy needs of the program as well.
I have to say, you know, there's really parallel paths here. There's, you know, when, when we start, when we launch, we're, we're going to have to use existing resources, right? Just because of the timeline. But those commitments are relatively short term. And the best way to encourage new development locally or just new development generally is through offering long-term contracts. And so what we had envisioned is that there would be a solicitation and RFO, you know, specifically for long-term resources. And that's where you can really kind of drive local development. The, the efforts that are currently underway with the resource adequacy RFO that I think we're going to cover. That's really focused on getting up and running and, but those are, those are commitments that are, you know, for the, for the near-term compliance periods. And then, you know, over time, you have this development timeline, new resources can get built for the, you know, minute to long term.
And, and I think as, as we consider the, the procurement process here too, I think it's important to note with, with any of these products that you need. You know, that the approach may likely involve many bytes, you know. So it might be, you know, a byte via participation in SDG and E solicitation. It might be another byte via a solicitation that you independently administer. And then inevitably there will need to be follow-up solicitations as you try to round out. The requirements that you're trying to fill between now and when, when you start serving customers. And then, you know, probably most importantly, well beyond that time. And that gets to the, the long-term contracting process that John just mentioned. And, you know, I think amongst those different processes that are, that are administered and within those processes. Within those processes and across the the various term agreements that you'll be looking to fill. There'll be plenty of opportunities for for local developers. So. You know, it's I I understand it's easy to get discouraged sometimes when you look at maybe the first solicitation that goes out or something like that. And it's not well suited to a particular type of respondent. I I wouldn't say by any stretch that that's. That, you know, that's where it all ends. There there's going to be more solicitations to come. And those requirements can be specked out in a way that 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 creates a real nice spot for local project developers. And I'm familiar with the fact that that's what this organization wants. And we're working with Cody on that, by the way, to 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 round out renewable solicitation in particular. You've got some long term needs there that you need to fill, be a long term contract. To meet regulatory requirements, and I think there's an opportunity within that solicitation. To be administered by SDCP that you create a home for for local projects. So maybe just a couple, couple more slides here before I I turn over the the reins, if that's all right. The next slide is kind of a. There's there's a lot, lot going on here, but I think maybe that's half the point of the slide is just to to indicate to you all that. As as a board, that we've got a number of solicitations that are in the works right now. I'd like to highlight a a couple of them in particular. So we've got in, let's see, we've got a. A renewable RFO that we're expecting SDG and E to issue, I believe it's tomorrow. So this is. As I understand it, SDG and E is looking to sell off some of the length that they'll have in with regard to renewable energy. After customers depart for CCA service. And so this is a an opportunity for. SDCP to participate as a buyer and 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 fill some of their expected open positions during early stage operations. Similarly, we're expecting an RFO from SDG and E or resource adequacy capacity and local RA in particular. And I believe that's a mid June date that we're expecting to see that. And and so one of the the items, I think it's the next item, is is going to be requesting your board's approval to participate in those processes. To to help. Explore what what sort of opportunities might exist to fill a portion of SDCP's future RA and renewable energy needs. Via purchases from the incumbent utility. And and you can also see here that we've also got. Some some solicitations of our own, right? So you can see there and it's in the second row in June and the kind of the blue column, the procurement milestones. They're at the at the bottom of those four items listed, SDCP issues long term renewable RFO. So this is what I I referred to just a moment ago, where we have an opportunity to. Spec out our own requirements for buying renewable energy. And, you know, hopefully encourage robust participation from a diverse set of constituents, including. Including including local resource developers. And so that's going to be, you know, on the horizon here very quickly. And and, you know, I I think other than just highlighting those upcoming pieces of the puzzle. Please let me know if you see anything here that piques your interest or that you have questions about. I think one of the the things that we're going to talk about on the next couple of slides. Are some some preliminary targets, if you will, for renewable energy. And overall carbon free content that would apply to to this organization. Based on the pro forma. Operating projections that we've run to date. And and I think. Maybe just in the interest of time, I'll ask if anybody has questions on this particular slide. Otherwise, I think we can move on and. And.
Kirby, just briefly, briefly, and I know this is, I don't know if it's more appropriate for the next item, but just kind of thinking. You know, about the market that exists or for the utility to sell the the local SDG and E to sell some of this excess power that that would have gone to our. Our 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 customers. You know, who is, what's the market like? I mean, who is who's buying this? And and what's it likely to look like? Because, you know, a lot of folks are saying, well, if it's if it's power that would have gone to your customers. You know, why aren't we just sitting down and talking about what a fair price is for that for that power? So I just kind of wanting to understand what the rationale here, what is what is the market?
Yeah, you know, that that question that you just kind of asked was is the same question that we've asked a number of times already. You know, you bought this capacity, bought this renewable energy with SDCP's future customers in mind. And why is it not the case that we wouldn't just be talking with you bilaterally to to try to make an arrangement as to how to divest that. Renewable energy and and RA RA capacity for the benefit of those same customers that you bought it for in the first place. And the response was in in maybe I'd I'd ask Cody to weigh in here if I paraphrase incorrectly. But it was essentially that, you know, they 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 kind of felt like they they needed to go out to the market to see what the the market would would bear in terms of. Price and and interest. So it's it's.
In a real sense, aren't we the market with 900,000 customers? I mean, we we are the market. So. So I just just trying to understand like what. What's your expectation?
Yeah, I it it's I I think it's a it's it's a good question, particularly as it relates to resource adequacy. At least the local product. On with regard to renewable energy, there's certainly a broader market for that. You know, you can not only have. The the other CCAs that exist, but you also have municipal utilities that have their own renewable energy procurement obligations. So that market. Is 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 pretty big within the state of California and. I think it it makes it all the more unfortunate that we we couldn't engage in bilateral discussions to try to work something out with the incumbent utility. But with regard to to the local RA product, I'd certainly think we'd be a. A very key buyer in that and I would I would certainly hope that the bids that were. Were going to put together are successful in securing a significant portion of that. But, you know, it's. This this could just be the first step in a in a in a long process. Hopefully, that's not the case. But, you know, I don't, John, you have anything else to add on that?
Well, just on the on the local RA, you know, SDCP obviously is the natural buyer. There there could be other buyers because. They. That capacity can be used to meet system requirements. So somebody, let's say, in Northern California. That doesn't need the San Diego local, they could still be it's still potentially be interested in that capacity to use for their own system requirements. And the system requirements and other utility areas tend to be larger, a larger proportion. So I think there there is a market for it beyond just SDCP. But I think SDCP would be sort of the highest value, right? Because because SDCP needs that that San Diego local attribute and some of the other buyers may not. So it does make sense to us that a bilateral. But bilaterally negotiated, you know, approach. Makes sense to us, but as as you've heard, we SDG and E has a different perspective on it.
I, you know, this is Board Member West. I think. You know, I I'm the more and more we talk about this and the more and more we have this discussion, especially when it when it when. And this is the third time I've seen this brief, so or probably the fourth now. I I feel like we're getting a point where we're getting one message from SDG and E and. There we're getting in, we're we're getting a very different message when we're actually working through this and I. I am, I feel like it almost needs to be. And Cody, you may, this may be an answer, this may be a question to Cody is, why are we getting these two different answers from this from our local? Partner and. And I'm just, I know that there are other markets out there. I understand that, but 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 when you're looking at San Diego in particular. It it makes it to where we should be working really close to one another to make sure that we're doing that just because we're at the end of the pipe in so many ways. So. Anybody, please take that question and and see, am I missing a point here or is there a concern that? Am I making this more of a concern than I need to?
Well, I I could chime in a little bit and Kirby take over and I know. You know, it's getting late. We could deep dive into this all night, probably, but I I'm suspecting nobody really wants to. And I'll be brief, but.
Except for the board nerds that all wanted that all want to talk about it, so.
Right. And we're going to take an all the above approach and the next item, which we'll get to in a minute, is asking for approval to participate in SDG and E's. Procurement process as well. So we're going to issue our own, we're going to look at theirs, we're going to look at the extent of all the options on the table. And try to put the the best package together that complies for the near term and then looking longer term, what we can do more creatively. That's my short answer to that.
No, that's good.
And 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 I would also just say that, you know, you're well aware that. SDG and E is a very large organization and and they they certainly have different departments within that organization. And there there may not be a great deal of coordination between some of the customer facing departments and the folks that are working on procurement matters. I don't I don't want to represent that as as 100% accurate, but that's a a strong suspicion that I have. So I, you know, I think when you're talking about a uniformity of the messaging there. What we're kind of relaying to you in terms of our experiences working with their procurement folks and what you're hearing. You know, in terms of the the customer kind of focus message. That's probably a good reason why there's a difference there.
Okay, thank you.
So maybe if it's appropriate to do so, we'll go ahead and move on to the next couple of slides here. So I I I mentioned that we would be touching on our kind of preliminary recommendations for your initial. Portfolio composition, and this would be be for the default service offering. So to the extent that, you know, a customer. Made no voluntary election to to opt up to a 100% green tariff. The the default service offering that could be accommodated based on our pro forma analysis. Would include 50% renewable energy, so RPS eligible renewable energy. I think it's important for your for your purposes to understand. There is such thing as non RPS eligible energy, but we don't intend to buy any of that. All the renewable energy that we would buy would fall into those first two categories that I mentioned, the bucket one and the bucket two. And in this case. Within that 50% renewable content, 82% of the 50% would be comprised of bucket one products. And then 18% of the 50% would be from bucket two. So this is all attentive to the different. Proportionate limitations that exist for bucket two within the RPS program. And so that's why you see that divide there, just trying to create some economic efficiencies. By by purchasing that a certain component of that bucket two product. To to help manage down costs a bit. And then in addition to the 50% renewable energy within the default service offering, there would be. A component of GHG free energy on top of that. So presumably hydroelectricity. Taking your overall carbon free content to 55%. And and then the balance of of the the supply. For the time being would be assumed to to come from the system at large. So these could be. Various contracts entered into for what they call unspecified power, which are basic could be in any generator. Or could be with specific generators on the system that are that are not renewable. Or 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 hydroelectric in nature. And I think it's also most important to note that in considering these percentages that we're kind of recommending today, based on the way the pro forma is looking. This is, you know, this is subject to to change, right? If if power markets soften and more renewable energy could be procured or more carbon free could be procured. That's certainly something that could be explored a little closer to launch as we're we're looking to fill. Remaining open positions, but this is kind of based on our understanding of the way the market's shaking out today and the way the prices look today. And what the what the pro form operating projections can tolerate in terms of of the various clean energy targets. And then, of course, how you see there the the interest in having an involuntary 100% renewable energy option. Which would would also be 100% GHG free by virtue of the technology types that are specified. So that that's kind of what we're talking about in this slide and the next slide. Pairs this alongside what we expect to see out of SDG and E. Admittedly, these are projections for SDG and E that are based on information that we pulled from. Their most recent RPS procurement plan, which is a submittal to the California Public Utilities Commission. Related to their expected compliance with California's RPS program. And so you can see here that, you know, in 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 all years moving forward. SDCP would be expected to have a renewable energy content in excess of what SDG and E's. Projecting and of course, well above California's mandate. And then an overall carbon free content that that further exceeds. At that renewable percentage. So. That's kind of what we're looking at to today and what we would be. Kind of keeping in mind as we go forward with these various procurement processes. And again, just as a reminder, this is a, this is, this is subject to. Evolving market prices. So if prices soften and we can, we can do more, we would certainly come back and let you know that. If prices go in in an adverse direction, then we would also let you know that, too. But that's kind of how how things are penciled in today. John, I don't know if you you have anything further to add in terms of the. You know, how these how these numbers look and and whatnot, but I think that's about it.
Yeah, that's just about it. I think just that we would we would revisit this later in the year. I think you already mentioned that.
Yeah.
As as we get a little bit more certainty around, you know, I think rates are a a big variable, the rates that will be in effect from SDG and E in 2021. As well as the PCIA, so revisit this.
I I do, I I mean, it's my hope that we can revisit this and we can talk about moving the dial on this. And so, yeah, I I I hope that we can talk about this as we get closer to launch and. And understand what the market looks like at that point, because I do want to stretch more than just 50%. That was kind of the bare minimum that we wanted to be at. I think too, too, is that we should, you know. You know, obviously, we talked about 100% at 20 in 2035, but we may want to talk about benchmarks in the future in in terms of what we want to achieve at certain dates. You know, aside from what state law is and and the ultimate goal of 100% 2035. What are the different benchmarks that we want to get to within RPS at in in certain dates? The other thing, too, is that 100%, if you had a community that said, you know, that we want to have our default at 100%. So that that, you know, they come in at 100% and if they want to opt down, they could opt down to the SDCP default. Is that possible?
Absolutely, yeah. I think if if your if your board decides that that's the direction it it wants to head, then. Then the, you know, the efforts on the the planning and procurement side would. You know, respond accordingly. So if if that's something that you'd like to do, I think we just want to make sure we have a real clear understanding of which communities are going to do that. What the the likely impacts to the renewable energy needs might be. And then, of course, you know, plan for that in our solicitations and and related procurement efforts.
Perfect. Do we have any other slides here?
Chair, yeah. I am, Chairman Mosca, thanks. I I am, I am in. I do agree with some benchmarks on here and I I think that what I would like to see and I ask for. In in one of the subcommittees was was to make sure that we. Each one of our city has our climate action plan that has specific dates and specific targets that we need to have. And I would like to see if there's a way that we could. Coordinate that to make sure that Chairman Mosca's benchmarks. That we're talking about are meeting our climate action goals on each one of these. So we can see another column in here, are we on track to meet those? Are because so because I'm going to be honest with what the state has and what some of the cities have are are different, you know, the I know my city has got a. We have 100% by 2030 vice 2035. So I was wondering if we can, yeah, and I think Chairman Mosca has got the same point. So I'd like to see. A benchmark and to make sure that we're on track to meet those goals and something that I can. I can take to my constituents to make sure that, yeah, we we're here now, but we're still on track to make our goal by 2030. And and this is how we're doing it. So we can see that and be able to articulate it. And I know that. There is a lot of uncertainty in the future, but but we still need to be able to track this in a way that I can. Articulate it to back to my city and and I think all of our, all of the board members need to have that as well.
Understood. And I think, you know, over time, this is expected to be an ongoing dialogue, right? Where we're going to report back about, not only about the progress that we've made in the various solicitation efforts that we're participating in, but also how it is that the prices that we're seeing, that we're likely to, you know, reflect in the contracts that are ultimately executed, what that allows for in terms of the right relationship with SDGNE and providing regular updates on that. Because, you know, as you're well aware, if rates aren't an issue, then we, you know, you can, you can go big with renewables or other clean energy targets and, you know, not worry about the impact to the customer in that regard. But I know that's not the desired end game here. So I think, you know, what we're trying to do is step into this solicitation process that we're about ready to embark on with some, you know, parameters in mind that are reflected in the pro forma currently. And like I've mentioned before, if we can do better, then I think the report back to the board is, then, you know, maybe we've got some flexibility moving upwards with these targets. And if it looks like, you know, the prices are a little, a little higher than we prefer, then, you know, we'll let you know that too. So iteration is going to be on the horizon here. And of course, we'll look forward to having that discussion with you and getting your feedback.
I do want you to know, one more thing before we go, I'm sorry. Kirby, I do want you to know that the maturing of this presentation was well, you did a great job on, from what we saw in the beginning to where we are now is a significant improvement. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I just want to be sensitive to everybody's schedule. So I want to, do we have any more slides here to?
I think Sam was going to cover a little bit of the, you know, an introduction to the risk management policy. And then, you know, I don't want to back Sam into a corner, but maybe he can, maybe he can move as, you know, as quickly as he reasonably can and we can get through the material.
Yeah, if we can, if we can spend maybe a few minutes on this, that would be great. Because I also have public comment to get to.
Perfect. Sam, go ahead.
Thank you, Kirby. So I'll do this fairly quickly. I think the purpose of doing a preview of this risk management policy is, as we've been discussing, we're wrapping up the procurement activity that's happening. And during the ordinary course of business of doing procurements, there's, for the sake of efficiency and with quick turnaround times required, many times we'd like to set up the sort of delegation of authority. So this is a preview of that and to try to get some sort of feedback related to that. So you have risk management policy, you will have a risk management policy because you're STCP, you're participating in the energy markets. And the risk management policy is basically a way to make sure that you effectively control your procurement risks related to market and credit risks. Next slide, please. And there are six main energy market risks. There's market price risk, which is a risk that your, that the prices could move adversely against you. But at the same time, it could move in your favor as well. Kind of party credit risks, where the kind of party may or may not be able to deliver as promised. Load and generation volumetric risk, which essentially is the inaccurate load forecast that could lead to over procurement or under procurement. And volumetric risk on generation, that the generator doesn't deliver what they expected. Operation risk is the risk that, potential risk that of failure to control your business operations. Liquidity risk is that STCP may not be able to meet its financial obligations. And regulatory legislative risk is essentially the risk that shifting or changing laws, rules, policies will negatively impact STCP. Next slide, please. So the key elements of a risk management policy. So first, you want to define your goals. Second is you want to say how are you going to reach those goals? Third is what are the key things you want to see in order to reach those goals? And fourth is how are you going to govern those, that activity? I just, just to focus on, so the first one is really drawn directly from your JPA, right? So you want to, yeah, the purpose of reducing energy related GHG emissions promotes rate stability and foster local benefits, but minimizing risk. Internal control principles, I'll just focus on the segregation of duties between front, middle and back office. And then here's a delegation of authority, which is important and what we'll talk about it as we go on slides. Business practices, so you want the senior management, you want to see some dashboard to see what your, your open positions are, what's been filled, what hasn't, what's still open, your value at risk and also your credit exposure. And the governance, so the thought on the governance is that the policy will be overseen by the Financial Risk Management Committee as delegated by the board. And then once the, once STCP becomes operational, that would be delegated to the Risk Oversight Committee. Next slide, please. Risk Oversight Committee, so as I mentioned, the thought is that once STCP is operational, the FRMC could form the Risk Oversight Committee and delegate that responsibility to that, to the Rock. The Rock would be focused on reviewing their energy procurement activity. And it would be advisory in nature and not subject to the Brown Act. So you could have more discreet discussions about positions that, market sensitive information. And the membership of the governance of the Rock would be generally interested board members, the STCP CEO, CFO, general counsel and CEO or procurement director. Other people can be invited as necessary, but technical consultants will be in there. The chart on the right just basically shows Korean post 2021. Next slide. So the, going to the delegation of authorities, so the purpose is to, it's a tool, right? So it's part of the internal control that we talked about that allows timeliness and efficiency in energy transactions. Set in an amount, can measure it with procurement levels and designated staff. So basically, you don't, you want to make sure that somebody, whoever's transacting on your behalf has the authority to do so. And it allows timely authorization for products that require quick responses. Some of the RFOs be put out, you know, we require response within a couple hours because that's as long as they will hold their bids open for. And to make sure that when the delegated transactions are actually done, that you'll actually see them because the transactions for the prior month would be reported at each board meeting. And also the master contracts that are part of these sort of transactions will be listed on the consent calendar. So you'll have, you'll be able to see these transactions as they occur. The parameters that we're going to be using will be based on the tenor, which is the time, the length of the transaction, the total volume and notional value of each individual transaction by resource type. And oversight, we talked about already. And the request here is to get feedback on the, these are draft delegation of authority parameters. We'll see the next slide. Next slide, please. So next slide, the, just to set the stage here, STCP, you're estimated to procure anywhere between $450 to $500 million annually. And the first table basically, in light green, shows the transactions that would be, we expect to be more frequent. And then the rows would be less frequent. And what we did was we basically took what we estimated the average transaction sizes could be for CCA of STCP size and the tenor and to, and just calculated what the notional value could be for each one. So you get a view of the size. And just to stress it a little bit on the high end, the term used was for three-year term as opposed to one-year, just to see what the maximum values could be. And in the light green, you'll see that most of the transactions that are frequent are under $50 million total in notional value per transaction. The other ones in the rose color are larger and tend to be over $50 million. So that just kind of sets the stage to how we came up with the preview of the delegation of authority that's in the table at the bottom here. So the idea here is, as I stated earlier, we're seeing like a cutoff point of about $50 million for notional value limit. And what we had added on here is when we had a discussion in the FRMC meeting, one of the things that was requested was to throw in a tenor limit. And we threw in a tenor limit of three years because we thought as, as looked at the estimated transactions and the terms, you know, three years even on the max side would still give a notional value under $50 million. So that's what we came up with. And we also broke it down by product type, which is a little bit more of a refinement from our last discussion at the FRMC. And actually even through a volumetric limit per transaction by resource type. And the idea here is that anything above these limits set by, for the CEO would have to go to the board for approval. So I'll just stop here and see what sort of feedback or thoughts or questions anyone may have. Again, this is a preview. And the idea is that in the June board meeting, that we would actually bring the risk policy for approval, which includes this delegation of authority.
Thank you, Sam. This is really important information. So I like best practices and I like looking at what other organizations are doing. Clearly, the Clean Power Alliance is one organization that we could look at, although in some ways it's not completely analogous, even though we have the same amount of customers, their gigawatts are through the roof compared to ours. So our gigawatts are smaller, but obviously very large. So are there other CCEs that you've looked at that are, that are, we can glean some best practices from?
Sure, yeah. So we, you know, we, as you know, we also manage the risk policy and we work together closely with many other CCAs, including Marin Clean Energy, Silicon Valley Clean Energy, Monterey Bay Community Power. And, you know, they're not quite as large as STCP, but you know, fairly large in size. And these CCEs, they have, they vary by, in terms of the limits, right? Some of them go by, say, just pretty much just a tenor, like things for under one year, for instance, but which, because it's more in ordinary course of business, some of them have a combination of kind of what we have here, which is a breakdown by product type, not even by product type, actually just by tenor, volumetric limit and notional value. So what we did, it was we pulled the, what we thought made the most sense from different CCA delegation of authority amounts and pulled together what we thought made sense for STCP.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Sam? Board member West?
Yeah, Chair, I just want you to know that we, I really appreciate what Sam did because he took a lot of the stuff that we, that we asked him to do in the risk manager, financial risk manager and put it into this and made some changes on it. So we did look at some best factors, best practices from other organizations to make sure that we had it in here. So I appreciate what Sam did and my support.
Good, good, good. And when we present information that was already presented at one of our committees, we should probably say that the Finance and Risk Committee has reviewed this and this is what their comments were too, just so that board members know that it has been reviewed as well and the public knows as well. Any other questions for Sam? All right, we do have some public comments. So I'm going to go to Megan and let her read some of the public comments that we have.
We have three public comments for item number six. The first one is from Matthew Vassilakis. And he writes, Dear Board Chair and Board Members, on behalf of Climate Action Campaign, we would like to express our concerns over the potential exclusion of renewable energy from STCP's resource adequacy procurement. Reaching 100% clean energy is paramount to STCP and individual cities' commitment to climate action. We understand the need to be fiscally prudent and challenges around RA procurement. However, we strongly believe that the STCP can identify a small select percentage exclusive to renewables while maintaining a healthy balance sheet. Setting an example for local clean energy development this early, be it solar, storage, combination or other means, would showcase STCP's commitment to our local clean energy future. And we hope the board will consider this opportunity to pilot when the time comes. Thank you. Our next comment is from Jason Anderson on behalf of Clean Tech San Diego. Congrats on all of the successes you have made to date on the establishment of San Diego Community Power. From the establishment of the Community Advisory Committee to securing the necessary financing, it is great to see things progressing. On behalf of the region's renewable and clean tech industry, I would however like to express my concerns for the recent RFO released by San Diego Community Power. Due to the quick turnaround time and the short length of prospective contracts, the RFO is more suited for fossil fuels rather than clean and renewable sources. Given the goals of STCP as they relate to local renewable and clean energy, it is my hope that future solicitations will offer more response time and a focus on energy sources that are clean, cost competitive, and those that provide multiple community benefit. Our next public comment is from David Harris. He writes, speaking as a member of the STCP Community Advisory Committee, I oppose exclusion of renewables from resource adequacy procurement and ask the board to support at least a small percentage for local renewable energy development. That concludes our public comment for item six.
Sorry about that, I was muted. Thank you, Megan. Any other questions or comments for Sam or for Kirby? Not seeing any hands, let me see if anybody's jumping around here. All right, not seeing anybody wanting to respond to this. Okay, this was a receiving file and I think Sam and Kirby, you've received a good amount of information. Are you guys fine?
Yes, thank you. That was, that was great. I appreciate the robust discussion and look forward to coming back to your board in the future with additional information on these topics as we continue to refine the portfolio elements.
Awesome. All right, let's move to item number seven, approval of STCP's participation in SDGNE and request for proposals. I guess this is Kirby, but Cody, do you want to take this first?
I'll just pass this right off to Kirby if that's okay.
Yes, I think, I think what you've, what you've already heard plenty of, so maybe we just don't belabor the point anymore than we may already have, is that we've got some upcoming solicitations that we expect for SDGNE to administer. One for renewable energy that they intend to sell off, another for local resource adequacy capacity to be used to demonstrate regulatory compliance. One of those solicitations is, we're expecting to see it come out tomorrow. That's the renewable energy solicitation. The other is mid-June, June 15th, I believe is the date. That's the local RA solicitation. And essentially the request to your board this evening is to allow staff to participate in those processes by submitting bids that are essentially consistent with the parameters that have been established in STCP's pro forma operating projections. So I think that's more or less the request. Cody, anything to add?
No, that's it, thank you. And this is an approval from the board that we're seeking.
All right, just out of curiosity, are these binding?
The, as I understand it, nothing's binding until we negotiate an agreement. So the offers that are submitted, clearly we would want to be well intended in making those offers and, you know, sincere in submitting them. But, but much like any other contracting process, until there's kind of ink on the page, nothing is bought or sold.
All right, any questions by fellow board members for staff or for Kirby? I think we have one public comment. Megan, did you want to read that public comment?
We have one comment, it's from Matthew Vassilakis. He writes, Dear Board Chair and Board Members, on behalf of Climate Action Campaign, we would like to highlight SDGNE's recent comments in a voice of San Diego article whereby they express their resistance to partnering with STCP on relevant energy procurement matters. This is another clear signal from SDGNE that they will continue to resist efforts to ensure our clean energy future is secure. We hope the board will keep this front of mind as they continue in their conversations with SDGNE. And we hope that SDGNE will change course and work with the community on these matters instead of against it. We also want to highlight this as another example of to why STCP must be engaged on state energy matters, including our previous comments in support of STCP joining an Anamikis brief to appeal the CPUC disastrous 2018 PCIA exit fee decision. Thank you. That concludes the public comment for item seven.
All right, thank you, Megan. Bring it back to the board. Any comments by fellow board members? If not, I'll also entertain If not, I'll also entertain a motion.
So a member Baber moves it.
We have a second.
Second, West.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any comments on the motion? All right, let's go to vote.
Board member Montgomery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board member Baber, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board member West, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chair Mosca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
Right. Let's go to item number eight, approval of the La Mesa Cooperation and Administrative Services Agreement. Cody, did you want to take this one?
Yes, thank you. So this is a pretty straightforward agreement and we you all adopted one similar for the city of San Diego. This is in exchange for the services that La Mesa and Megan, her fantastic services that she's providing to us for clerk services. It's an agreement to repay the city of La Mesa for those services. And actually, I think it doesn't really need much more introduction than that, but we do appreciate Megan's service.
I'd like to move the item before Megan changes her mind.
Second, West.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We don't have any public comment, any comments on the motion itself?
Other than, thank you, Megan, for doing this. You go above and beyond your service to La Mesa to help us with this, and we really appreciate it.
My pleasure.
All right, Megan, will you? We'll have a roll call. Vote.
Member Montgomery, how do you vote?
Yes, and thank you, Megan.
Board member Baber, how do you vote?
Yes, and thank you, Megan.
Board member West, how do you vote?
Yes, and thank you, Megan.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
Yes, and guess what?
Chair Mosca, how do you vote?
I'll continue the train. Yes, and thank you, Megan.
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
All right, let's move to item number nine, approval of our Community Advisory Committee nominees for Chula Vista and amendment of term end date for all CAC members. And I'm going to turn this over to Cody first and then and then Cody, if you want to turn it over to Vice Chair Padilla.
Yeah, that would be great. We don't have much to say on our end, just that we were waiting to nominate the Chula Vista members that they could join the group. And we're happy to be doing that tonight. I will let Board Member Padilla do all the rest of the introduction. The only additional item on here is approving an amendment to the term for the committee members to end in May either 2022 or 2023. It's just a change from ending in April so that they're all on the same term. And since the Chula Vista folks are getting appointed one month later. And with that, I will turn it over to Board Member Padilla.
Thanks, Cody. And just very briefly, you know, I didn't anticipate going to sleep for a little while causing a delay in our process, but I'm glad to offer Ms. Schofield and Mr. Lopez both as Chula Vista's nominees. The Schofield comes from the world of education with credentialing, upper level credentialing in mathematics, biology, general science. She's been a very engaged community advocate around a community equity and particularly around CCE and CCA. She's actually been up to PUC a number of times. This is what you call dedication. So I think she's a quality addition. And Mr. Lopez, of course, is CEO of Ucan and is an attorney who has some regulatory familiarity. So I think they both would be solid additions to the advisory committee, and I would ask for your support, and thank you.
Is that a motion?
I'll move.
Second, remember West?
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. Any comments on that motion? All right, and we don't have any public comment, and so we will move to vote.
Board member Montgomery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board member Baber, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board member West, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chair Mosca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
All right, let's move to director comments. Any comments by any member, any of the board members?
I have one, Chair, it's Bill.
Board member Baber.
I just want to say, Steve, this is the first time I've seen you since you fell ill, and it's so good to see you, my friend, and I'm so happy you're better, and I missed you. And seeing your face today was great. So thank you for being back.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that, Bill. Good to hear your voice and see your face and look forward to the day when we can all catch up in person.
Absolutely. Um, any other board member? All right, then we'll move to reports by management or general counsel. Cody or or Ryan?
I've got nothing further. I don't know if Ryan has anything to add.
Ryan, your report, thank you.
All right, you can take us into close if you want.
Excellent. Thank you. The board will now be entering closed session as stated on the agenda as items 10 and 11. Item 10 will be a conference with legal counsel involving public employment titled Chief Executive Officer. Item 11 will be a conference with labor negotiators. Agency designated representatives include Sean Marshall, the Energy US, Tom Bukowski, City of Encinitas HR Department, and Ryan Baron, myself, DBK, outside general counsel, involving unrepresented employee chief executive officer. At this time, in order to hold the closed session, the board will be leaving the Zoom meeting room. When the closed session is over, I will return and report whether any reportable action occurred during the closed session. Members of the public are welcome to remain in this Zoom meeting room until that time, but the session will remain silent. And I would ask our host to keep this Zoom session going. I did reemail you the Zoom meeting for our closed session, which you can enter in now, and we will log off and keep the public session going, and I will return and report out at that time. Thank you.
Ryan. Um, I don't think I can hear you. Can you say something again? I can't hear you, but it shows that you're unmuted. Let me see if Cody can hear you. I don't know if maybe the issue is on my end.
I can't hear you either, Ryan. No.
No.
Is there a call in number?
Yeah, there is a calling number. It's on the agenda.
Oh, he's going to log back in.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I might have selected telephone on accident trying to click too quickly.
No worries.
All right, let's take this from the top. Members of the public, Ryan Baron, General Counsel to SDCP. This concludes the San Diego Community Power Board Directors' closed sessions for item number 10, Public Employment Regarding Title Chief Executive Officer, No Reportable Action Was Taken. For item 11, Conference of Labor Negotiators Regarding Unrepresented Employee, Chief Executive Officer, No Reportable Action Was Taken. This concludes the board meeting of the San Diego Community Power Board of Directors. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sebastian.
You're welcome.
Good night.
Good night.